Open up the committee, the whole meeting with the territorial acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the land. Um, I, I will do it for committee, the whole and you can do it for open board.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
We acknowledge that the land on which our school and district buildings are situated is the traditional unceded and unsurrendered territory of the Algaunman people. We also recognize the enduring presence of all First Nation, Mayan and Inuit peoples on the land which we gather here today. I have one regret, trustee Nick Edge sends his regrets, he will not be able to attend the word or committee, the whole meeting today. And at this point, I will turn this over to our past chair and our acting vice chair, trustee Humphries.
Thank you, thank you very much, trustee Kaiser. I know, I know that all of you have the agenda for the committee, the whole for today, November twenty third in front of you. So I am looking for a mover and a seconder to approve this agenda. As I look over here, trustee Shields and trustee Ganette, are there any questions or comments or discussions on the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor of this agenda? And that's Carrie. Trying to see where all the trustees are, so I only need to look this way. Um, are there any indications of conflict of interest based on the agenda items today? Much, we will carry on. Uh, at this point, I would look for a um a motion to move into closed session, as you could see, the first item on our, our agenda is a closed session audit item. And I would look for a mover and a seconder to move into close, so trustee Kaiser, trustee Boland, all in favor of moving into close. Very much, we are now in closed session. And we'll move into the open session, which also has obviously lots of money assigned to it as well. So we're, we're, we're on a money spree today perhaps. I would like to suggest that we switch the first and second items. We would like to actually bring the accumulated surplus appropriation transfer report first to the board, followed by the audit committee's open session report after that. So if we can just move to that one and I believe I would just call on superintendent Barnes, is that correct? My guards, if you don't mind, carrying on with the accumulated surplus piece, I appreciate that. Thank you. So the purpose is to seek approval from the board of trustees for transfers into internally appropriated accumulated surplus. And this is our normal practice, part of the final stages of the year end audit requires the district to approve the motions on the books for the transfer of funds to and from the accumulated surplus appropriation reserve accounts. And the auditor requires that the board of trustees approve the movements listed below. And Susan, would you read the motions?
Certainly, I easily do it, thank you for that. So the following are the recommendations around this topic is that the Renfrew County District School Board approves the internal appropriation for the twenty twenty to twenty twenty one year as follows. So first of all, the accumulated surplus internally appropriate, we would transfer one point one one million, one hundred and fifty one thousand, four hundred and fifty six dollars from internally appropriated for retirement gratuities to fund the current year amortization of the future benefit for retirement gratuities. And secondly, transfer five hundred thousand dollars to the ICT plan internally appropriated funds to fund the future year expenditures. And as well, transfer of three hundred and one thousand into renewal non-instructional appropriated funds internally restricted for administrative projects. Do I have a seconder for that? Trustee Boland? Are there any questions, comments for superintendent Barnes? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call the question, everybody in favor of this particular motion? All in favor? Excellent, thank you, and that's very, thank you very much. And then we will move on to the audit committee meeting open session report. And I guess I will turn that back to Chair Adam again, with the simple, you carry on.
Thanks very much, trustee Humphries, and so it's in this the report that we will find the other necessary approvals. Because audit committee did meet on Wednesday, November seventeen, twenty twenty one, and we discussed the draft audited financial statements for the year ended August thirty one, twenty twenty one. And also annual reports to the board from the boarded committee. Um, these two, there will be two recommendations, one is to accept the draft, the um draft audited financial statements to approve those. And the second one to report, to approve those reports, which you will find separately in your package. And these are um these are the the reports that we send, that the audit committee sends to the board of trustees to say that we've done our job and this is how it went. And the second one is the report, the summarized version of that, which goes to the Ministry of Education. So they know that the Renfrew County Board of Education has a solid audit committee that's doing the job it's supposed to be doing. So the following recommendations were made. First, do you want me to take them one at a time?
I think, I think we'll do them one at a time.
One at a time. So the first one relates to the financial statements that Sylvester just did for us. The draft, that the Renfrew County District School Board adopted draft twenty 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 one financial statements as audited and reported upon by Welsh LLP at the November twenty three, twenty twenty one board meeting. And that's subject to board approval of the internally restricted accumulated surplus transfers. That was our recommendation from the committee before we had the approval for the transfers, and that's why it's still in the motion. Are there any questions about that motion?
Can I have a seconder for that, please?
Oh, sorry.
The trustee Kaiser, thank you, and yes, any questions, comments?
Good, then I.
And we'll just vote on this one, if I could have a show of hands to support this motion, please. And that's Carrie, thank you.
So the second one is two brief reports that I already mentioned, that the audit committee approved the annual report to the board of trustees for the year ended August thirty one, twenty twenty one, and the annual report to the board of trustees and forwarded to the Ministry of Education for the year ended August thirty one, twenty twenty one. And that both reports be adopted by the Renfrew County District School Board at this, the November twenty three, twenty twenty one board meeting.
What kind of seconder for this recommendation? Trustee Ganette? Any questions or comments? This particular recommendation. Seeing none, all in favor, supporting this recommendation? And that's Carrie, thank you very much.
And that concludes the business of the open session of the audit committee on September seventeen. We have really adopted those recommendations.
And thank you very much, Carrie. Excellent work. And, and difficult work, I'm sure at times, challenging work. Okay, moving on then, the next item on our agenda is around capital priorities for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. And we're always interested in hearing what's on the plan for this one. And let's move on, sending it over to superintendent Barnes.
Certainly. Um, I was expecting Bill to be here either in person or on the screen, I don't see him.
Just waiting patiently, I guess.
Yes.
Thanks, Tammy.
Thanks, Tommy.
Happening in the hallway.
Stop and chat. Had a question on one of the previous motions.
Just, just on the ICT plan, whether we can get a report out there.
Where they're coming from?
Know where they're coming from.
Are they going to be used?
They're being used for generally, but do we ever get a report specifically where we're down the road?
You recognize this?
Yeah.
Yeah. We, we.
That's part of the X two ones.
Uh, yes, we have a line there for the ICT plan, so anytime we move money in or out, we bring that to you. And, oh, I'm looking over there, but Tammy's gone now, but year to date is probably the next time you'll see it, believe I see it at revised estimates, and then year to. Does that help, Davis?
Sure.
Okay, so I'll still turn over to you, Jenny. Welcome, Bill. I'm glad you're here. You know, you're excited to talk about the capital priorities for this year?
Hey. I guess I am.
We're all excited to hear about them, Bill, so I'm looking forward to the report.
I appreciate hearing that, because sometimes you, you never know, if you're just rattling on and people are just being very tolerant or if there's actually interest. Um, I want to start by saying, or to acknowledge and thank the facilities team that allows us to come to you with, with a capital priorities budget. So there's the assistant managers, Michael Blatt and Tara Ziole, the four persons, Mike Blackburn, Dave Grant, the facility secretary Katie Sharp, who is such an important part of the team and juggling all those pieces that allow us to uh to get a lot of work done. And we take information from the, our internal trades, requests from principals, from the senior exec team. And we, you know, we, we look at annual reports on the state of our boilers, our fire alarm systems. But the, you know, with all the work we've been doing on the ventilation systems, we have really good data uh that we're looking at now to try and prioritize those, those highest needs items. So we're, we're coming to you, um, you know, with our, our best thoughts at, you know, on November twenty third about what work we should be doing. Um, that's not, you know, some of this work is already completed because it involves student safety issues that were identified on September third. So there's, there's a little bit of work that's already done that we just had to do because, you know, we're supposed to try to keep students safe. Um, there's way more work than we're going to do in, uh, over the course of the next ten months. I'm, I'm really trying to reconcile myself to how we need to change how we operate. Because um, in the past year where we had projects that were ready to go, we were rewarded by federal money. So that, that allowed us to do a great big ventilation job at Ivy School. Because we had a project that was, that was basically shovel ready, although, you know, a wonder. Um, so what I have here with, with, you know, a plan for more money than we could spend over the course of the next twelve months. We will be touching on these projects numerous times throughout the year, planning, trying to um allocate resources internally, arrange for external contractors. And also the consulting support that we need for the, the engineering side, which over the past year, um, that was one of the, you know, the biggest gaps that we found for getting work completed was timely completion of the scopes of work that we send out for tender. The, you know, that we think the contractors are busy, those engineering firms are completely swamped. And they're, you know, for the first time ever, we've had consultants say, refuse work. Which I, no one ever wants to refuse work because they're worried you'll never come back, but they've just said, we can't. You know, we don't have enough people to do what you're asking. Um, so that's going to be one of the, the biggest challenges, along with supply chain issues that, uh, that I think everyone's becoming more and more aware of. Um, things like insulation, steel, uh, even at times ceiling tile. We've had to wait five and six weeks to get ceiling tile to finish classroom projects. So we, you know, we always try and keep a reasonable amount of stock available. Uh, but we've, we've run out a couple of times through that, had to wait a significant chunk of time to uh to uh, uh, finish projects. So, oh, very long intro, um, and on to the report. So our, our funding, um, we have funding basically from, from three main sources. Um, typically, and that's the school renewal allocation, which is the roughly two point eight billion. That's virtually unchanged year to year within a, a few thousand dollars. That's the, the per pupil amount, so it's, you know, we, as our pupils go up, we'll get a little bit more next year than we did this year. So that's, that's good news. School condition improvement funding is it's based on the condition of our buildings, um, and also the, the condition of buildings, age of the buildings. We have a relatively old fleet of, of schools, the average age of our, our schools is sixty one years. We need to take in to account things like Valor, which is a, a large school that's five years old compared to RCI, which is not a, a very new school. Um, so the average age of all is worth sixty one years. The school tuition improvement funding is five point eight five million. It went down about half a million, um, from the previous year. I have asked her a capital analyst about why that is, and I'm curious to see what sort of answer they will provide, and I will share when I have it. But funding, it, it's meant to work on the, the infrastructure of buildings. So seventy percent of it needs to go to systems that, um, uh, require regular refreshments every fifteen or twenty years. And then there's a, there's thirty percent of that value can be used for things like parking lots, um, interior finishes, flooring, you know, things that do wear out too, but uh, are, aren't as critical. Uh, we also receive some temporary accommodation funding, which is a calculation that the ministry does based on how much you've spent on, on temporary accommodation in the past, they use a, a three-year polling average to think, or to determine what your funding is there. And so that's about two hundred and sixty three thousand. We do have a, a major capital project underway in Kaua'awa at Herman Street. I would encourage you to drive by, it's a, uh, the parking lot is, is complete. Um, on both sides, the, the building is, is closed in. Uh, we'll have a roof going on within two weeks. And this project, as they say, it's currently on budget, there's a, that's a little caveat there. Because I, um, I didn't, I don't expect anything, but uh, um, I don't want to oversell and under deliver. But we do anticipate that that project will be complete early, uh, which currently ever happens. The other major source of funding in the past year was the COVID resilience infrastructure stream for education, so COVID severs funding. We were lucky enough through our submission to receive about four point five million dollars for ventilation upgrades. Uh, so that was the, the major project at Highview. Plus, all the remaining schools will all get duct sealing and air, the active air treatment. But I've spoken about in the past, we are uh, we're eighteen schools in for the, what, what ministry considers as our urban schools. We were to have that work completed by December, or the end of December this year. They did give us an extension, uh, recognizing the difficulties that, uh, boards were having getting work done. Those eighteen schools will still be complete by December of this year. Our remaining schools such as, you know, Opiango, the Mackenzie, our, our less urban schools will be complete by June. Uh, I would love to come back to the board when they have more information. We've got some data about Champlain, Fellows and Valor. We've seen airflow increases greater than thirty percent at all of those sites, which, you know, I, as I said in the past, for the, instead of a million dollars at those three sites, if I was to spend that on new ventilation equipment, we would have gotten a third of the result. So we're, you know, it's such a good investment, and I'm so happy that we've seen the, uh, the results that we've had. Because it's, it's, it's more fresh air in, in schools, which it's great. When there's pandemic, it's good every day of the week when we, when we think about things like sick building syndrome, which is basically too many people and not enough ventilation. So in sites where, where kids are, are inside for long periods of day, having more fresh air is just a good thing. Um, so current status, I've listed the funding, the seventy three thousand, four hundred and four dollars I, that's listed under temporary accommodations. That's the money we'll spend to, uh, lease the Whitney site, which we are permitted to do for temporary accommodations. Um, I'm proposing that we would take deferred revenues for, from the school renewal uh, amount of, what, like two million dollars? Again, I, it, it would be incredible if we got into that money, but I, I have to account for it here. Um, the other, the other piece of vehicles and equipment, we still have two vans that we've never received from last year, just because the, the shortage in vehicles. I know that this amount has not changed in fifteen years. Um, I will have to talk to my superintendent about that. So a hundred and twenty thousand dollars does not buy what it did fifteen or twenty years ago. And the, the other piece related to that is, we are just on the, you know, the cusp of, I think that we need to start greening up our fleet of vehicles and, which will result in, in greater costs. But we, you know, in, in my mind, we don't have a choice, we need to find, um, those greenhouse gas reductions wherever we can. Our vehicles are, are an excellent way of doing that. Um, the list of projects, I'm happy to discuss them one by one, but there's, there's one in here that I do want to, uh, uh, point out, and it's, it's sort of related to my last comment about how we, how we position the district as a leader in terms of our environmental presence and our carbon footprint. So I, I've allocated a million dollars to start the feasibility study for a, um, a solar PV project for Opiango. I would love if, uh, if we had a carbon neutral school by the time I, I disappear. And I think Opiango with its, uh, with the amount of property we have here, got a great big roof, would be a great start. So I'm I'd like to get that feasibility study done this year. And, um, I know with, with the main transmission line just upgraded in the past two years, we've got capacity to handle a large amount of power coming out of the building. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we can get started on that and it become the first of many greening projects that we do. The other thing that we're, that I'm struggling with right now is that, you know, part of that greening will be moving away from, from carbon. Um, so we, we have, you know, we have either natural gas or propane or oil boilers at all of our sites. We need to figure out a way to, uh, to ditch those, those appliances and, uh, and move to electric power, just because the, the impact, because our, our electricity is so green in Ontario, uh, with, you know, a relatively small portion of it coming from the burning of natural gas. Uh, we, we need to, we need to make sure that we're trying to electrify all of our systems whenever we can. Uh, so I'm, as I say, we're, that's the other piece that I feel we're just on the cusp of, that, uh, things like air-to-air heat pumps have become so efficient. I know on a much smaller scale, I have one at home that eats my house down to about minus seventeen. So the, the amount of oil I burn in a little, little tiny house has gone uh, basically a quarter of what it would have been four years ago. So those are things that we need to start doing as we, uh, as we move forward as a, a greener entity. Uh, so that, you know, and that's a benefit for all. Um, so I, I've been proposing fifteen point two million dollars in spending over the past four years. Uh, I checked on this today, we've had a low of six point nine million spent in capital projects in nineteen twenty. Two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Anyway. But, but wait that one. Um, the year before in eighteen nineteen, we were twelve point three million, which was a, just a ridiculous year. Last year, I thought we got to ten, but it was only nine. I don't know if we can do nine million dollars worth of capital projects this year, based on the availability of, um, resources and, and people time. If we got eight done, I would be, I would be satisfied. We don't, I'll, I'll wear that too, um. So I, I guess I'm, I'm trying to, I'm showing you fifteen million and I'm telling you eight. So, uh, if we're somewhere in between, I will be very, very happy.
Any questions for, for Bill?
Yeah.
Uh, Bill, I'm just assuming you and your team, where the government's going, there's probably all kinds of incentives to do. As an example, you mentioned Opiango High School.
Yep.
And I think that they may even increase over the years because there's a real push on from electric vehicles to doing what you said you want to do at Opiango High School. Um, you know, I think that, uh, in looking back, I mean, it's good to do it as you get the money. But I think the incentives, I think moving forward are going to be greater. And that's how I see it, I mean, I know that the government, uh, due to COVID and everything, been under, you know, a lot of duress financially. But I think that that's where they want to put their push, maybe it's a good time for us, like you say, with you behind the helm, to move forward on these capital projects, because I just see the incentives being pretty top shelf. I'm not, I'm not at liberty to know what they are, you probably do, but just that moving forward, I think, of great value to our board and other boards. Just more of a comment than a question, thank you.
Absolutely, the Canada Infrastructure Bank, I think it has seven hundred million dollars worth of investment that it's, it's sitting on, looking for partners to do greenhouse gas reduction projects. The, the problem is you have to have a twenty million dollar project to approach. So that's all the poor reason why we need to put together, uh, you know, grand schemes with taking into account twelve buildings and greening those twelve buildings rather than, you know, doing, you know, one marvelous project at Opiango, it would be great if we were doing seventeen or eighteen buildings at the same time and were able to, to leverage that funding. Um, in the past, we've been, um, constrained. And, uh, in terms of how we could access funding like that, that the, the ministry um, had in the past, a, a pay-as-you-go approach. There was direction from, from the provincial government two years ago now, if we needed to look at different models. So using energy as a service, so that savings in energy fund capital projects. That was all put on hold, you know, in, in March of twenty twenty. But it's, you know, it's still there, that expectation is still there, we need to figure out how to make that work for us in a fiscally responsible manner, so that the, there's no risk to the board. But it allows us to do big investments and see big gains quickly. Um, in two thousand sixteen, I mean, remember I talked about our FCI, which is the Facilities Condition Index, which is the difference between our repair liabilities and the value of the buildings. So in two thousand sixteen, our five-year needs were a hundred and twenty one million dollars, and that equated to a uh, an FCI of thirty four percent. So in, in five years, our FCI has dropped to nineteen, our five-year needs are about twenty, or sorry, just under a hundred million dollars. So we, we know over the next five years, we're not going to get a hundred million dollars to repair those. And that's only for the repairs, that's not for the upgrades that allow us to, to reduce our dependence on carbon. Like that's just to, you know, to keep doing things the same way we've always done. So to, you know, to be prepared with good projects and a, with a fiscally sound way of paying for them is going to be so important over the next five years. And it's, it's going to take some, uh, big picture thinking and trying to have as many projects as we can on the shelf ready to go, so that when those opportunities come up, we can jump on them.
I believe Chair Morris had a question, and then we'll come back to you, trustee Shields. Go ahead, Brian.
Thank, okay, thank you very much, uh, Bill, item number one twenty eight. Uh, the gym divider at Valor, is that a repair or a replacement?
That's, that's a repair, we need, as, as you know, that gym door has been a, a thorn. Thorn isn't strong enough, but it was anything worse. We aren't able to use the door for periods in the winter, so that, that will involve raising the door a couple inches so that it could be used year round.
Okay, very good, thank you.
He shields?
Yeah, Bill, we, we, uh, did an experiment at, at NAB with solar, uh. Is that off the off the map now, because that didn't turn out well?
No, it, it didn't, and that's, that's fueled some, or fueled a lot of my hesitation. Um, that was a, a project that was funded jointly by the NRC and the board. And it involved capturing, um, heat from the sun, basically, instead of generating electricity, it generated. And it involved capturing, um, heat from the sun, basically instead of generating electricity, it generated heat that warm glycol that ran through a heat exchanger to heat the school. It was never, it, it, it never panned out. We did not get enough energy in January and February to, uh, heat the school, so we're always running propane boilers to supplement. Um, so it, it didn't work out for us.
Anything like that in the future?
Not, not with thermal, I think, I, or not with that method of, of, of energy capture. We, we need to, we need to look at generating electricity onsite and solar PV is, is the, or photovoltaic solar is the, the best way of doing that. The prices have come down dramatically in the last five years, so that the paybacks for, for those investments are now in the ten-year range versus fifteen years. And when you, you know, when your system is, is guaranteed to last for twenty years, it means you're, you're ahead for ten years as well as all the, the, the natural gas that you haven't burned in the meantime.
Yes, trustee Kaiser.
More curiosity question, Bill. I mean, um, I'm not saying I'm on top of it by any means, but a lot of arguments are that natural gas is a, is a clean source of energy. Just what, what can you tell us about that? I mean, in terms of not, not sure electricity is the answer to everything, but is natural gas being a clean energy source, as I understand it, is that an option? What, what is it with natural gas that's so, that's high-carbon?
Natural gas is so much cleaner than coal. But you're still, you're still creating greenhouse gases through the, through that combustion process. It's just, it's, and when can, when it's compared to coal, it's, it, it looks clean. We, we do, we're currently working on, um, on responsibly, on finding a way to buy responsibly sourced natural gas, which, um, you know, that they modify and track their, that the producers modify and track their production methods to create cleaner, uh, natural gas. Um, and we're, we're looking at ways that we can, and it's a little bit more expensive, but I, you know, it's, it's also a little bit greener. So we're looking at that. There, there is green natural gas where, uh, it's, it's, uh, created through, um, biodigestion, which is, you know, that's a, a completely clean natural gas, but if it's, if it's being pumped from underground, it's, it's, it still has, certainly has an impact on, on our, our carbon footprint.
You? Any questions, comments? Yes, trustee Ginnis.
More of a comment, Bill. I understand, uh, I hate a couple of buildings myself with natural gas and, uh, the word out is this year in particular, natural gas is going up or has gone up fifteen to twenty percent. So the days of cheap natural gas, at least in the short term, aren't there anymore. Um, that's sort of the, what, what I've been reading up on. And secondly, I'm just wondering, we, us being very fairly rural in a lot of areas, I don't know how many of our schools wouldn't even be able, uh, hook up to natural gas. I know propane, which is very expensive, but like with a line of natural gas going directly to the building, there might be a number of schools that wouldn't even qualify, I'm assuming that.
You know, we, we do, like, obviously Opiango, Madawaska, uh, McNab are all propane. Uh, Eganville is oil. So, you know, we, we don't have that option everywhere. Um, so, you know, we, we, we need to, in my mind, we, we need to start looking for alternatives. The other thing, sorry, sorry to interrupt. The other thing about natural gas is, you know, we have this carbon tax thing, which is currently fifty dollars a ton. In twenty thirty, it's a hundred and seventy dollars a ton, if they don't increase it. Uh, this year, the, in partially, you know, a small amount due to carbon tax. Our propane bill, we anticipate will be a hundred and ten thousand dollars more this year than it was last, just and that's through market pressure. So that's a hundred thousand dollars we don't have to invest in buildings and to do those things, to do those things we like.
Kaiser.
It's to be the pessimist, though. I mean, natural evolution of economics is that if everything goes to electricity, supply and demand means that electricity will be in less supply and it will cost more down the road. So I'm not saying we shouldn't be doing it, but I don't see or hear that argument presented, but that's happened forever. And that's what's going to happen with electricity down the road. So we, you know, probably a better way to go, but I think we need to be prepared that it's going to cost us more for electricity in five years, which might offset whatever the carbon taxes. Hopefully, the people who make those decisions understand that and make sure that there's a, a gap, so that it's, you know, financial incentive to move to electricity as well as an environmental incentive.
Absolutely. And the, the piece that we, we do have control over is onsite generation. And, you know, as long as the sun keeps shining, there's a, a unlimited, um, per, potential for a creation of electricity onsite. And that's, you know, as soon as we stop paying those distribution charges and we're refitting vehicular and, and those, when we can make it onsite, that's where we'll see cost control, which will save, it, it will protect us.
He shields in the back, trustee Ginnis.
Do any of our schools or buildings have backup generators?
Yes, they do. Quite a number. It's, oh, we talked about Thorn of my Side and, um, we, we, Opiango, Killaloo, Eganville, Fellows, Valor, Mackenzie, all have backup generators. Palmer has one as well, Board Office. Um, and they're, they're just meant to keep the base building operational. It's not, it's, it's not like a, a generator that you put in a community center for a, a disaster relief. It's meant to keep the building freezing up and sort of, you know, to keep four or five people working, uh, for a short period of time. Um, so I guess, and when they don't work, it drives me crazy. Yeah, we, it, we test them weekly, we monitor them and then the power goes out and it doesn't work. Um, so.
We won't talk anymore about this.
Yeah, Bill, I'll be brief. Hopefully my last comment or question. Um, the type of heating that you're putting into your own home draws, uh, heat from the ground. Um, that, that type of heat, I don't know how expensive that is, but that's something I'm looking into myself for a building that I own. Okay, it's about nine thousand square feet. So, um, I, I, with some of the large properties that, you know, we have with our schools, I, I, I think it's probably a pretty expensive venture initially. But I think in the long term, isn't that just like you say, self-generating?
Uh, uh, absolutely. It's like it's still, obviously, you, you need electricity to run those pumps. We, we have, uh, uh, ground source heat pumps at, at Maston and Killaloo. Uh, so those, those sites, we, we've already adopted that technology. And the, the other, when I talked about what I did at home, it's an air-to-air heat pump. So it's just extracting a tiny bit of, of heat out of the air, even when it's quite cool to, uh, to heat the house. And those are, are now becoming commercially available, uh, being sized properly for, for commercial and institutional properties.
Those two schools that you mentioned, how are those, how is that in-ground heating working out overall in your comments?
It's, it's quite good. Um, and the nice thing is it's, it's built in air conditioning. Uh, so, you know, we've, we've been adding air conditioning throughout the county for the last six or seven years at those sites, because you've, you've got a, a heat exchanger. It's, uh, in the summertime, it's, it's creating cool air. Um, they're, in, in terms of greenhouse gas, and when they, they perform great. Uh, overall energy costs, maybe a little bit better, a little, better than propane, not quite as good as natural gas.
Well, trustee Adams. Just to conclude on a cheerful sort of note, um, I was, uh, I want to thank you for whatever magic you have in your surprise in keeping the Herman Street project on budget and on time. That's an unusual accomplishment these days. I did drive past Herman the other day and snook around a little and it's looking fantastic. And as you know, Bill, I've, I've had a close association with that school in past years. And the parking and, um, bus collection seems to have really been solved. And I know I nearly tore my hair out on the bus collection loans. So thank you very much for that.
Oh, I, I wish I could take credit for it, but, uh,
I understand your routine and all that stuff, but. There's, um, there's a project manager in Europe.
Okay, if there are any other questions, I believe we have a recommendation, uh, that goes along with this report and I will read that out and, and move the recommendation. That the Renfrew County District School Board approved the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two capital priorities as presented the amount of fifteen million two hundred and twenty-two dollars and, uh, two dollars, twenty, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. Do I have a seconder for that, trustee Bowlin? Any other comments or questions? Yes, trustee Kaiser.
Just a comment to follow up on, on trustee Adams. You really have a challenging, uh, portfolio, I guess, it just complements. I mean, your reports are always informative, simple, very to the point. Um, I, I think, you know, certainly I, I respect that and appreciate that and just thank you for the work you've done. So the challenging area, especially.
Thank you.
All in favor of the recommendation? And that is Carrie. So thank you very much, Bill. Yes, um, just to echo again our comments and thank you for, for all the work we do and you do and all the, and how quickly you respond to issues as well. That's much appreciated. So thank you for that as well.
There, there are lots that would disagree, but, uh, this, I'll take it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. That's all, you know.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Hey, our final item on this agenda today is getting us to think about the December election process around our existing table. And so I will ask, um, our communication manager, John Lattarot, to bring forward a, a brief update and a report on the committee structures and elections for December.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is, uh, an annual opportunity reminder. It should be quite familiar to all of us, but nonetheless, a refresher is in order. So the December by legislation in the Ed Act, uh, the boards, boards must have an opportunity in the first week of December to come together and host an annual organizational meeting of the boards, the purpose of which is to, uh, appoint, uh, select, confirm, uh, positions of chair, vice chair, committee chairs and other representation from the trustees on the, the variety of committees that they may have. So with respect to, uh, our approach on that, uh, we have to have that first before we have the rest of board business, as it were. And we have, uh, uh, three items that we are part of regular board operations and, and staff reports that we're going to be bringing to you in December, but before that can happen, we have to have this meeting first. And, and, uh, because we don't have the positions of chair, vice chair or committee chairs uh, for that meeting, the, the meeting at the outset falls to the Director of Education. So that individual, uh, you know, will, will lead the meeting at the outset. And the process, uh, first and foremost is to, uh, get the chairperson in place. Uh, so the director will call for, uh, nominations, self-nominations as well. Um, second, it has to be seconded by another trustee. And then, uh, the individuals who've been nominated, uh, can either stand, choose to stand or decline the opportunity. Uh, the nominators, uh, multiple or one individual may, may choose to, um, speak the reasons why they're nominating somebody. They have a minute to do that. And then the individual who's standing for the position has three minutes to, uh, make their pitch, as it were. Uh, then two scrutineers are appointed by the director, that will be, uh, practice has been myself and Shelley. There'll be a ballot, uh, and we will vote for the position chair. Uh, where there is a tie, uh, or there, it's unclear, we, we, uh, vote again until individuals who are, have the lower of the votes are dropped from the ballot. Uh, and if we do come to a, a point where we're having, uh, a stalemate or a tie, we will draw a lot, uh, draw a lot then in terms of, uh, establishing the individual for that position. Once we have the chairperson in place, establish the meeting, then it turns back over to that person. They take the gavel and they proceed with the same process of electing, appointing, confirming the vice chair. And then the practice, while it isn't established in the policy that we have for the board, we have been following that in terms of the, the committee chairs, but generally, I think this group has been pretty good to lay the groundwork or have the discussions in advance of that and sort of allow for uh, folks to, to identify their preference and be able to sort of work it out prior to the meeting. So when you come to the meeting, uh, there's a fairly good understanding in terms of the committee structures uh, and representation, who is, is on what committee and, and in what role. So to that point, uh, in years past, we've had an opportunity as a handout to provide you today to take back, look and evaluate all the committees that we have that you're responsible for in terms of having a presence on and then indicate your preference. Uh, instead of handing out paper, uh, taking from, from Bill's, uh, uh, environmental theme, we're just gonna, I'll email to you all today, um, a survey, very quick, brief opportunity. And it'll explain the process for you and then you'll just simply note your preference according to mates. That data will be shared with the board chair, uh, and then we'll move forward through that at the next meeting. So that is the, the general quick overview in terms of how we approach, uh, the December meeting. Any questions?
Comments? So we will do that prior to committee of the whole?
That's correct.
And go away.
But, but so the process for that is, and that's a good point, Susan. Um, through the chair, Brian Morris brought this up, uh, a few weeks ago in terms of the discussion. So because we don't have those positions in place, we, and we, it's the director's meeting, uh, but we have a number of other items. But you think of our process with respect to COW traditionally being before the board, a board meeting. But because we don't have those positions in place, we can't have COW. So we have room based on the language of our own policy, which has generally followed this, which is COW before board. So we're not, we're not sort of handcuffed, as it were, uh, to have that in place, so that the, the discussion and, and what we landed on is having the organizational meeting first and then simply having as, as part of the, the meeting agenda beyond the organizational aspects, uh, moving into those as part of that. So it'd be just the, the meeting itself would flow rather than having those breaks and having the recess and adjourn and come back.
Yes. The online survey ideas perfectly, so just.
Yeah, then it's, you can do it wherever at home or wherever you have, okay.
Great. Is there any other additions to this agenda that we've already approved? So hopefully not. I think there are any good questions. And with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Uh, trustee Adam and the trustee by trustee Shields, all in favor of adjournment of the committee of the whole. And that's Carrie. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for a good meeting and, uh, great reports. So how long, do you want to take a break? Well, I guess we've got forty-five minutes. That's shocking.